If you're ready. All right, I'm going to do call to order. A hybrid meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. Today is month Tuesday, July 6, 2021, at 6:30 PM. I'll note that all three selectmen are in person for the first time in three months, about 15 months, I wish. So, welcome back. We will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will stand and join us. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of.
And hopefully you can all hear us. I am going to start by making a motion to move item A of Old Business to right after President to speak. One of our presenters has another town meeting. Holiday, we have. Well, I didn't need to, has another meeting she needs to get to. Seconded by John, any discussion? Sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right motion carries. All right, so that leads us to approval of minutes in your packet. You should have minutes from the June 21st meeting. Entertained a motion.
I'll move the, we accept the minutes of June 21st as written.
All right, moved by John. Second, second by Elijah, any discussion? Being none, I will ask for a roll call vote. Blessing him.
Aye.
For it. Oh, listen, aye. Motion carries. Present to speak. So we do have a couple of folks in person with us and several on the phone. So if anyone would like to speak, I ask that you raise your hand. Or if you're on camera, you can unmute yourself. Identify yourself for the record. Limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? I'll let you all know, no one in the room. If there's no one on the call, you will have an opportunity to speak again at the end of the meeting. I'll give it one more opportunity, going once. Twice. We'll move forward. All right, that will move us right to item A of Old Business. And we are calling this discussion The Treasurer. As you recall, we started this discussion, we came forth with you that we thought we needed to see some change in the work of the treasurer. And that that would, in my opinion, and after speaking with both our current treasurer and our business manager, lead to the creation of an additional employee position in the finance office. So what we've been working off of is a job description for an assistant to the business manager. So you should have that since our last meeting. John had asked several questions. Lori did respond to those. And speak to them. Just discuss them. Lori, do you want to take a shot at? Well, I'll go with John's question. In the checklist, you, under David's task, you talked about control books. John's question, if he reads it correctly, the treasurer is doing the accountant's job, among other things, as the treasurer entering payroll. Didn't the town hire a payroll clerk to do this? The, the control book is essentially our check register. And so what currently Lori is doing is taking the information from the payroll clerk and putting it into the control. And so she's not doing the job of someone else that was hired to do that. It's, it's a function that when we, when and if we create this position, would take that task away from the treasurer. And it would go to this new position. And so it would be leaving the treasurer out of, out of that, is that correct, Lori and Donna?
Yes.
Clearly, okay. John, your next question, under this assistant to the business manager position, it includes responsibilities of the payroll clerk and the tax collector. Perhaps you need to take a look at the other job descriptions so they could be assigned to the new person. The new position does have some, some duties that are being done there because they would be handling different aspects of the job. So currently, our payroll clerk does the payroll for the town, the board of ed, the library and the fire department. This new assistant's position would take over the fire department and the library. Payroll piece of that, that gives us overlap between those positions. So that in the event we have someone else, someone on vacation, there's another person who knows how to do those tasks because they would be doing them on a regular basis for the smaller groups that are not town employees. And they, they might be, and Lori and Donna, you can jump in here. The things that they would be responsible for, collection of monies from various departments, would be very minimal.
Yeah, it's, 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 the tax collector's responsibilities are no different than they are now. From what I understand, the tax collector really takes in the money. But the treasurer and this other person will also be involved with revenue. And they have to process all of those deposits into the software so that we can reconcile and things like that. So it's not really changing anything that the tax collector is currently doing.
And today, we discussed earlier what it was. Can you give us an example of something that wouldn't go to the tax collector but would go just to this individual?
Um, the health insurance paid by retirees of the board of ed. And it's very few, I take in very few deposits. There are a few like that that I process. I give them to the tax collector to actually make the deposit. And then I get them back to process them in the software. So most of the deposits go through the tax collector, but there are some that come through the finance office before they go upstairs to the tax collector. So the tax collector still really handles all of the bank deposits. So that's separate from everything else the treasurer does with the banks. And it's really no change with this new position. So I don't know if that's clear.
Position would do those and the treasurer would no longer be touching. So that there would be someone else handling those dollars. So that when the treasurer does the reconciling, they haven't done any of the other pieces.
I thought that, I thought the, well, yeah, the treasurer, okay. I'm sorry, so the treasurer wouldn't be handling these, the tax collector would, or the new person.
Correct. So then we'll just finish with John's questions. Among the essential duties to the assistant are depositing funds, which I again understood to be the tax collector. I think we talked about that. There are very few instances where that would be, and it would be again, this assistant, which is someone in the finance office, not the treasurer. So there is a separation of those duties. That was something that was pointed out to us over many years by our auditors. A large part of the responsibilities assigned to the position have to do with payroll. Again, we have a payroll clerk to do all of this. I disagree, there are not a lot of the responsibilities, but there are multiple items that make up those tasks. So while it seems like they would be doing all of them, they wouldn't, they would be handling them for two small groups. And Donna and I are going to talk to you about how we envision that position. And that would give overs, not oversight, but an additional outrun of time, an additional person to be able to handle those tasks. So if we found ourselves in a way like we did this winter with someone in the accounting office out, someone else within that office could step up and maintain critical functions, which we don't currently have. Copies of the job descriptions to compare who does what task and what will be assigned to the position. So does that give you some, a little bit better understanding? So I'll let Donna share with us her vision for what, our vision for what this individual would look like within her office.
Sure. Go ahead, Donna. So this would be a full-time, 40-hour-a-week position. This person would be handling the revenue side of the budget with doing forecasting and revenue reporting. Would also be doing audit schedules. Would also be doing a check run for accounts payables for one of, one or two of the smaller connection groups. So this is the overlap that Erica was talking about. So we have two people every week doing a little payroll, doing accounts payable. And then the reporting.
In, in the job description, you see it broken out into all the little parts to those tasks. And that's why it does, it seems like a lot because there are layers to the process of the payroll and the accounts payable.
Some. I don't know. My brain doesn't work anymore.
We have, yeah, so in your, do you want, we've got to that part yet. So in your packet, you'll see some of the treasurer checklist duties. And some of those things might change, but they'll really involve the treasurer doing the reconciliation part. So it keeps them out of the general ledger, which was a big concern before, out of the actual depositing, which was a concern in the past, takes all of those away from that person and puts them into the finance office and the revenue tax collecting office. So Donna has provided us with three flow charts. The first one is when we had two part-time account associates that did the accounts payable. So there was the business manager, a payroll coordinator, two account associates, one for the town, one for the school, and then the elected treasurer. And you can see the, the salaries. And Donna has given you a dollar per hour for those four. So the totals you're seeing at the top are the totals for just those four salaries, not benefits and not the business manager included. All right, so 158,544 was what we were expending when we had those four positions. Our current structure is the next sheet, which has, again, the business manager, the payroll coordinator, the account analyst, which is now 40 hours a week, and the elected treasurer. And that has us at about 135,003.11. So what we're proposing is in the third flow chart, which would then have a payroll coordinator, the account analyst, the proposed assistant at 40 hours a week, and the elected treasurer. Again, there are no hours associated with compensated elected officials, but we've estimated the amount of work to be done would be about five hours a week. And so Donna has proposed, there's in, in the first two, the payroll coordinator and the account analyst, those are the approved union salaries or per hour salary. So those are set in stone. The others are proposed. Donna is proposing what the stipend for the elected treasurer be. And it would work out to be about 25.67 an hour, which is about what the current stipend works out to be if you work 24 hours in a week. And this would be in five hours, so it would be $6,674.20 annually. This is based not on where we'd be in this fiscal year, but an annual number. So it would be different moving forward. And the proposed assistant, you can see the proposed rates. And you would start at that 25.67 an hour. And that, using that low-end number is where the 53.393.60 comes into play. Again, this does not include benefits, that obviously would be a full-time position that would include benefits. We do have a placeholder in the current budget. So if we hired a new full-time staff member, that would already be budgeted for. So that brings the total for the four proposed staff numbers to 163.339. We would need just a portion of that annual salary, a little over a year, I'm sorry, a little over six months. We'd be looking at about eight, eight and a half months of salary. If we were to hire and have this in place by mid-October, so that with the election of a new or renewed appointment of a treasurer to be in place, someone could be in place. Lori could then work with him while she's still in that treasurer role. And then either Lori re-elected or a new person elected. And it would fall into line here. So this is what we're proposing. Donna has taken a look at, at the budget, and I know we are just starting. But again, remember, we budget some things based on what we know before things are finalized, and health insurance is one of them. And so Donna believes we could find the dollar amount within our health insurance line within this year. So the steps would be for us to approve this move, finalize the job description. And Donna still has some suggested edits to the job description. And we want to take a look at the treasurer one side by side. So for tonight, it's a good opportunity for us to ask any questions, any suggestions about job description edit for the assistant. And then at our next meeting, take a look at them both side by side and see if we need any edits for the treasurer's job description as we have it, making sure it still falls into the state statute. So the treasurer duties are outlined in state statute. And that would clarify that. And again, we believe that the work then simplified as we see it. And as we see it, and many other municipalities would have that position not need as much time as it's taking now. Lori, what would you say you're averaging on a weekly basis? You're muted.
Well, you know, I have worked 32, 35 hours and then some weeks I work 25 or 26. But, you know, I, like, I just was gone for four workdays the end of last week. So I tend to be a little bit heavier on the hours when I'm there because I, you know, I might be gone for, you know, at some point in the month for a few days to camp or something. So I would say that when they told me originally it was 20 to 25 hours, it's probably on the upper end of that. But I think if somebody is there full, you know, I mean, if I were there every week, probably 25 hours. Although there are times that I've had to put in more than that, especially when I'm training on software and things like that.
And there's still multiple items that are happening in that position that we know from best practices from our auditors should be peeled off. And that's what this will do. This will finally make that, make that final step so that we are separating who, who handles these duties and keeping things clean.
Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Has the board of finance been involved in?
No, but the way I see it, John, is we need to have something concrete before we take to the board of finance. So their role is, you know, the funding of these tasks. And so we need to make sure that we have that in place. So I don't want to go to them with something that we aren't set in stone. So we haven't moved on any of this yet. We haven't finalized any of this. And when we do, to me, the next step is to take it to the board of finance to make sure we can assure that there's funding there. We wouldn't do the transfer necessarily right away, but make them aware and then have that discussion with them.
The other question, we have a treasurer checklist here. Some of us, I have no idea what it means, but the we, I assume we'll get a or perhaps in English job description for what we expected from the treasurer.
Absolutely. So that's what, what Donna and I talked about today is the next step is really taking those two job descriptions. If we're sure we want to continue to move in this direction and work on finalizing those two job descriptions so they align with the plan that we have in place. And then making sure that they are clear and that we're not expecting the treasurer to maintain duties that we know not to be one of the practice that we're trying to.
And I re, we're not making any motions.
I think so. So I'd like to agree that we're ready to, we want to keep moving forward. That the end goal for us is to approve a new position. And making sure, you know, everything is set with that. And part of that includes the union agreeing to the terms of the new position. And so I don't either, but they have to, you know, they have that saying that in the final dollar amounts are going to come to them, which is why I wouldn't go to the board of finance with a particular item yet. We've been having these discussions for a couple of months now in our public meetings. So it's all part of, you know, open discussion. And I think some of those other board of finances are aware of the discussions we've been having. And when we have something concrete that needs their attention, we would absolutely take it to them. But we haven't moved anything forward, so it would be a little bit premature to go to them. So at our next meeting in two weeks, what I propose bringing to you is then another draft of these, of this one, and then the treasurer job description in line. And hopefully at that point have some input from the union. I've sent it out to our attorney to take a look at. Obviously, it's not the final draft, but it's a draft. All right. Anything else? All right, so Lori, you're welcome to stay with us as long as you can understand that you have to go. And Donna, again, you're welcome to stay with us, but it's been a little, we understand, so thank you.
Have a nice night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right. I missed correspondence, there was no correspondence in our packet. Holiday timing's interesting. Even another one trying to get in. All right, so moving right along to first select status report, the steep grant. We haven't heard anything from them, but with the end of the fiscal year, this is the whole town hall septic. We're still waiting on the contract. With the end of the fiscal year and the holiday in there, it doesn't surprise me that they've taken a little bit of time into the legislative session. We do have to, one of the steps is to get a certificate of appropriateness from the historic district commission. So we have applied for that in, in August. Troy and I will go before that commission to get that needed to work in the historic district. I have no new update on the school building committee since our last meeting. There is a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30. The lots of, again, nothing new, everything at the state seemed to kind of halt as the budget was being finalized. And all right, interesting beeps. As long as it's not our machine that's just the alarm. Oh, it's the alarm. I bet Donna set the alarm from downstairs. Sorry, that's correct, I knew the alarm monitor. All right, the fiscal year ended June 30th. So we are now in the 21, 22 budget cycle. We have until the beginning of August for all final invoice paid monies. We're all encumbered before June 30th. And we definitely had some spending towards the end of the year with some necessary items. So we're going to be under 100,000. It looks like probably closer to around 40,000, 45,000. So we were pretty good and on budget this year. COVID, I'll give you some updates. Vaccines, as of June 30th, Wellington showed 52.01% fully vaccinated. So it's still about half of our community unvaccinated. And that's half of our total community. We know children number 12 are eligible. So there's still some folks out there. I would ask them to consider consider becoming vaccinated for their safety and those around them. It's an individual choice and it's not required by any means. We have had zero COVID cases since our last meeting. The majority of the state is, is sitting pretty good. As a state, we're well over the 50% mark for COVID positive, I'm sorry, for fully vaccinated individuals. So as a state, we're doing pretty good, but there's certainly still some work that could be done. Other than that, things, knock on wood, on the COVID, it's been pretty quiet. You can see we're back in public for meetings, and we'll talk about what that means in meetings later on the agenda. We have had three resignations since our last meeting. Joan Oris, who is our assistant assessor, has submitted her resignation. Joan came to us in November, a well-seasoned assessor and assisting. And we couldn't have asked for much more at that timeframe for sure. So she will be missed, but I think she and her husband are ready to enjoy the next stage of their life. Ashley Stevens, who's the assistant land use agent, has also resigned. And our Heather Sharply is leaving us. So they are all leaving on Friday. So all three jobs have been posted, along with Bethany, our parks and rec director, is filling her assistant position now that we have parks and rec activities up and running. So you'll see several openings in the town. But I want to take, you know, thank those that are leaving us, want to thank them for their service to the town. They all joined us during COVID and certainly rose to the challenges we faced, and I wish them luck. I will say what has really been eye-opening is what our expectations specifically in the selectmen's offices. We had to, to ask one individual to be really an administrative, executive administrative assistant to the first selectman. And the expectation that everything that runs this building and town, town hall operations on that one individual is next to impossible. It's, in my opinion, and I will not put Heather on the spot, but I don't believe she'd disagree with us, it's not a one-person job. Even if it were full-time at 35 hours a week, it's, it's a large task. And, and I say that with all due because we are, it's handling things in the selectmen's office that change on a daily. They are very abstract and not necessarily wrote items. Things can happen. Some things happen every year and we have to do those. Some things happen as we go. We have new projects, we have new items on our list, getting us information on a new, creating a new position. And then there are things that need to be done when three new employees come on board. Who sets them up with how to enter the building? Who sets them up with how to get on their computers? Who, who does all of those things? And to expect one individual to do all those things. I, I think we, I know I have learned is not a task for one individual. We are continually asking those in our midst to do more for less, and it's, it's just not working. Almost a broken system. So as we look to replace this person, you're going to see me in the next coming weeks, present to you a request for an additional staff member. At one time, there were two people. When Robin is in the selectmen's office, someone else worked in there and handled some of those tasks. When that person went away, it was all absorbed by one. Just because we take it all in doesn't mean we get it all done. And doesn't mean we can do it well. And I just think it's, unless I'm not sure I could fully describe to the amount of work that needs to be done unless you're here on a daily basis. So we need someone, they need to work together, those two individuals, they both would work out of the selectmen's office. And would coordinate some things, but very different tasks. And one would have very concrete tasks. And ordering supplies for, you know, janitorial, making sure particular projects are handled, organizing the meeting room schedule for this building. It, it is a lot. It is a lot on one individual, and you'll find very few towns that do it with just one. So that's my soapbox for that, and we'll truly be talking more about that in the future. Unless anyone's opposed, I'm going to skip over Public Works until Troy comes back. I think the best, I could probably read from this list, but he may have more to add to it. So it looked like the best phone. So I will move down to New Business, come back to Public Works. You see EMD appointment. So I will move down to new business. Come back to public works. You see EMD appointment. Heather is very methodical in her additions to our board meetings. And we had this on our list, but what we can't find is whether or not it needs to be appointed. Stuart was appointed in nineteen ninety eight. As our emergency management director, there's been no reappointment since. And there's no language that says it needs to be reappointed. So while we had it on this calendar. We can't really figure out why. So it doesn't appear at this time that a reappointment needs to be done. So Stuart Cobb is our emergency management director. I will remind you of that and tell you we have no action to take at this point. And since Troy has returned to us, we'll go back to public works. There's a weather event, so we probably have some public work to discuss.
We've been doing roadside mowing still. Today we helped out, take down a tent at Hall School that we put up. We've been chipping brush. Seems like we get a couple of trees down every time it rains and the wind comes. So we've been doing that. Trash at the park. We moved our refrigerators for Bethany today from here down there. She had some that didn't fail on her. So we did that. We removed the tree at Burma Park. It was a dead apple tree. Cut that down. We cleaned up the garage. We've been fixing fixing washouts along the sides of the road. It just had the rain all of a sudden. She's been doing that. We cleaned up catch basin tops and that's kind of about it.
We're in summer hours, so Troy's crew is here every day six.
Six to four.
Six to four thirty. Troy had come to me a couple of months ago asking if he could work five days a week in the summer. So we've altered his schedule so that he is, leaves a look before the crew does during the week. And then he's able to be here on Fridays. That's actually helped when there've been some issues where he's been needed on Fridays. And two of those four days, his assistant is in the public works office until four thirty. So if the crew needed something, there's someone there to answer them.
Yeah, I just had a question, Troy, earlier this year and budget. You said you needed more. Tree removal and why now I see what you meant the. I think there's an ash tree left alive in the whole town. When do they start coming down?
We have London and the list has been, you know, given to him, but he still works with his schedule. So we all have a guy, you know, a truck here and then he'll work for a couple of days. And then he goes and still does it. But I mean, he's on call with us. I mean, we have a list. Right now, there's probably anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred trees right now that I have on a sheet of paper that need to come down. The money that's allotted isn't going to take those trees down. You know, it's, you have to pick and choose almost. I mean, next to a stop, if a vehicle stops, a bus stops, it's it's a hit or miss.
So you prioritize like driving around. I know, I think I mentioned this to both of you during budget season. Troy, when he was making that ask, took me out to look at some of these trees. And you think you see something until you stop alongside them and you suddenly see a wood chip pile at the base of the tree. And you realize that's not a wood chip pile. That's the tree. And how long would you say from start to cutting down?
The ash trees have nine months. By the time the beetle gets in them, they have about nine months. They'll fall. They're on the ground, especially with these. You know, these little storms that come twenty minutes, it's it's going to cause havoc.
So about how much more funding do you think you'd need on the list of trees that you have?
I don't, I couldn't give you a number. It could cost five hundred thousand dollars. The more you keep driving, the more you see. Some of them are, you know, on town property. Some of them are off, but still it's, if that tree comes down, it's cleanup cost.
But what we're looking at right now are taking down only the trees that are on town property. It doesn't mean the others won't then fall into our property and they become our issue on a night like tonight where we get that wind and rain.
If the top breaks off, you know, if the trees in somebody's yard and the top breaks off and it's hanging out into the road. We don't have a bucket truck, so we have to hire a contractor to come in to remove that. It's not to get it out of the road. Fortunately, on John, you must have saw it on Cowell's Road there, or maybe not. We waited three days for EverSource. And finally I had to bring London in because they didn't cut it and it was, you know, you can't have a roadblock for that long. So it's, so I have to.
And Troy, you asked, we gave you an additional twenty five thousand. That's going to go pretty quick at fourteen hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, and some of these trees that they take down, it takes them two days to take the tree. You know, it all depends what size it's. And they're tall. Those ash trees are tall, so.
Now, if there's a tree that's tall, it's fifty feet back on the, on somebody's property. But it's a hundred foot tall. When it comes down, now where do we get involved? Do we wait for it to come down?
Yeah, basically what would happen if the tree did fall and there was no power lines involved. Say it just came across the road, you know, no power lines. We would clean up that tree, the section of it in the road. We would chip it and everything and we would leave a butt end of the tree. And that'd be the homeowner's responsibility, but we would go out and clean up, you know, the, our, in our neighborhood, basically.
We're not, what we had a plan for and wouldn't, it's going on to their property.
I know that, but it's, you know. I know there's one tree on Mason. When that comes down.
Just on Mason alone, I counted twenty six trees the other day, like when I put my list together, there was, and that's just, you know, there could be more.
The one I'm thinking of, that's the one that's fifty feet off the road. It's, if it comes toward the road, it's going to be there.
So homeowners should most certainly be paying attention to the trees on their property. And if they can be proactive in taking those down before it becomes a hazard and then hurts them, their property. Or worst case scenario, someone, you know, in open property on the road or roadside. So, yeah. So I would anticipate either Troy asking us for more money in the next budget season. Or we may be going before the board of finance for money in this year, depending on how bad the trees on town property get. Thank you very much. We'll see how much extra work he has after tonight's meeting.
Well, and this, the whole week is supposed to be like.
Jared's parks is a mess right now.
Okay, well.
Anybody who lives on Jared's parks.
We're sorry. So maybe she's stuck at home right now. All right. So we'll move on to item B of new business, recording secretaries. We have two recording secretaries that require appointments. One is CIP. We are current. Recording secretary has not been in communication with us and her appointment ended on June thirtieth. So we will be looking for our new reporting secretary for CIP. So if you know anyone who's interested, have them contact the selectmen's office. Before they get started, we'll need someone. The second is board of finance. So I will make a motion to reappoint Marissa Semperban as board of finance, recording secretary. Effective retroactive to July one, twenty twenty one, expiring June thirty, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Any discussion?
She does a really good job.
She does. All right. And I had spoken with the chairman of the board of finance, who asked us to make this point. So seeing no further discussion, I will ask for a vote.
Blessington.
I.
Florence.
I.
All right. Item three, public meetings. So Senate Bill one, two, oh, two, or better known as the implementer bill. Took effect July first. It's fancy implementer. In that was language regarding how we can hold public meetings now. So I shared with you all a memo that I sent to. Department heads, the staff and support, um, town boards, the superintendent and all board chairs. And so what we have to do, and I say we, I mean the board of selectmen, every board is having the same conversation and every board has to decide for itself. We, no longer is my office going to let you know what the executive orders are, what's coming out of the state. That ended June thirtieth. And so this takes effect until April thirtieth, twenty twenty two, when something new might take its place. There was lots of discussion in the legislature about a bill that would allow for some form of remote meetings. There was lots of discussion from the governor's office about mandating that. As we know, with mandates come unfunded costs. And you're going to see some of those in here. So we basically have three options for meetings. We can hold a fully in person, which is just like we had before. It's FOI, subjected to FOI, the Freedom of Information Act. And people can come in person. If we choose to have our meeting fully in person. Within twenty four or twenty four hours prior to a meeting. Make sure I get this right. Twenty four hours prior to a meeting, a member of the board, not the public, but a member of the board can ask to participate remotely. In that meeting. It would not make it a hybrid meeting. It would, the intent is not to make it a hybrid meeting. There was always a caveat within statutes and public meetings. That allowed a member of the board to, essentially we looked at us calling in. It didn't kind of change with the technology times. So I think in the past we've had that. I feel like one of us, Liza maybe called into a meeting via phone, or maybe that was in my board of ed days. So you could do that. And so that was acceptable. This is adding on to that, but adding the electronic component. And so if Liza calls yesterday for our meeting today, we would then send her and only her. The Zoom link to join the meeting. No one else would be joining in that manner. Everyone else would have to come in first. That's option one. It gives limited additional costs to us. However, if the board member then required electronic equipment, because they didn't have it, we would be responsible to provide it it asked for. So there could be a cost there. Item two is a hybrid meeting. That's the meeting I've chosen for tonight. And I made a choice the first time because we had to hold a meeting. And so we didn't have a meeting without having a meeting. So I made the decision, I thought this is best for us in the public. Hybrid meeting, anyone could attend in person. We provide them with a public location. And then we provide the link to the means to join us electronically in a way to participate electronically. And that you see here. So that could happen in either direction. There, there's limited. There are some costs, potential costs associated with it. Tonight, there are two meetings because of yesterday's holiday. There's a planning and zoning commission meeting at seven thirty and our media at six thirty. We only have the equipment in this building to hold one hybrid meeting currently. So I had left it up to planning and zoning, not knowing what they felt was on their agenda. They chose to go fully remote. Therefore, we weren't able to have ours hybrid. We need the ability to have a hybrid meeting in more than one location and that's going to cost some money. Later in this meeting, you'll see we make a proposal for spending some money in order to do, less than we spent on this project. But still needing to spend some funds. So that that's option two. Option three is a fully remote meeting. And a fully remote meeting would mean that nobody is here in person. We are all like we've been doing for the last fifteen months. But alas, if a member of the public in writing twenty four hours before that meeting asks. To be provided with the electronic means to attend the meeting, we are required to provide them a public space and the electronic means to attend the meeting. That means someone, a staff member of some sort would have to be in a public facility to let them in. To work such equipment, whether that was this equipment or laptops. We don't currently have laptops to use by the public and then someone to stay here with them during the duration of the period. The period of the meeting. That would be an additional expense we by no means budgeted for. And who would do that?
You know, I could see if there was a. Very controversial meeting, like maybe the gun range or something, you might have a dozen people ask for that.
If we chose fully remote meeting.
Right.
Right. And so that.
I'm not favored of that at all.
So there might be times when that might work best for us, but we have to remember that again, it has to be in writing and it has to be twenty four hours. Advanced notice. And there are, there are some. Few items regarding, none of this pertains to town meetings. I think it's important to say this, these are our public meetings, but not our town meetings. The language doesn't explicitly address town meetings and whether remote participation is permitted or required. The consensus by the attorneys who helped draft this language is that it did not require remote access to town meetings. Like we had been doing. And so we were working under an executive order that expired. So any town meeting we have in the future will be fully in person. He will have to be in the room to vote until such time as there's new language that allows for that to happen. And there was a lot of discussion on how you could verify people to vote and much concern. I think we all had that concern, Heather and I certainly could speak to. It's not an easy task. If you're doing a hybrid meeting, you have to remember that folks. Outside of just this board, we know how to do it and we also have the privilege of having staff. That attend our meetings. So we, you know, currently have Heather and then whoever takes her place. Not every board or commission has staff. To do those things. So the commissioners themselves, the board members would then have to be familiar with. How to use the equipment that we put here in this building and who's going to teach them how to do that. That's important to know. We want to make sure they have the options, but it comes with some additional tasks. Couple of caveats for hybrid and remote meetings. We've been doing them, but now they are one hundred percent required. The notice. If you're holding a meeting by remote or hybrid in, within forty eight hours prior to the meeting. You have to notify members that you're holding the meeting by those electronic means. So the members being the, the board or commission members. In addition to notifying them, we have to provide notice at our regular place of business. We currently do that on the board outside. At the town clerk's office, we currently do that and on our website. And we do all of those things, but now the website is a requirement. So if something went wrong and there was a glitch with the website, it can't be, while we met the minimum requirement, it's okay. It was on the website this time. We would have to postpone that meeting, just like we would have had it posted in the town clerk's office. So it just adds another layer. Remote and hybrid. Yeah, so that's anything that adds that electronic link. Votes taken at a hybrid or remote meeting, any member of a public agency is participating by means of electronic equipment. All votes must be taken by a roll call vote unless, excuse me, the vote is unanimous. So if Liza was joining us. Sorry, I keep using you as my example. On the left, you're on the left. Liza was joining us. Via Zoom, we would have to take a roll call vote unless it was unanimous. So we can start with all those in favor. If we heard a no, we then take a roll call vote. We've gotten in the habit of taking a roll call vote. There's just three of us and the only one we don't say yes, nobody tends to say no to is the adjournment. So it's good that we're in the practice of taking a roll call vote. I will tell you, I'm not sure how the board of ed has been handling theirs. But the board of finance has used that method this entire time. So it's great practice that they're in. It's become rote, so that's good. And then meeting minutes have to require which members were attending in person and which were attending. By electronic equipment. So there's just a little extra caveat in the minutes there. So there, there are pluses and minuses to both. One of the cons to in-person meetings is those that still aren't comfortable coming out and joining us in public. Then wouldn't have access. Those who have gotten accustomed to joining us. From the comfort of their home that fit into their family schedule now would not be able to join us. We've really given folks access. And I, I kind of appreciate it. So I like the hybrid method for our board. We may all choose to be here and then people could join us in person like we had tonight or via Zoom. So I, I tend to like that. There's nothing that says we have to make a decision for every meeting tonight and stick with it. We choose how our meetings are going to go. And make a general consensus and then if we thought we needed to have a proposed change in between meetings, I think that, you know, certainly could. Be discussed. I think it's important for us to get back in person, but I also think it's important that we continue to make. The, the meetings of the town, specifically the board of selectmen and the major decisions we make accessible to our residents.
And that's always been true. Yeah. And I think, and we've had, I think one of the very first conversations we had as a board was about how to increase access to these meetings. Because such a small percentage of people can get here. So there's, there's really no facility that we would be using on a regular basis that would really allow as many of the townspeople to attend. I think. Going to a hybrid as our standard practice makes a lot of sense. Not just because of COVID, but because of accessibility to our town politics and legislative process, period. And I think, I think all three of us would agree that we've been. And I think, I think all three of us would agree that we've been having those conversations and questioning, how do we do that? I think since our first meeting, you know, when you and I joined the Board of Erica. So I fully support a hybrid model for these meetings. And I'm sure you're going to get to a plan of how we get there. It seems to me that this is very specifically what the American Rescue Plan funding is designed to do. And with it being a limited timeframe and very specific requirements for how it's spent, it seems like this is the kind of thing that would, it's absolutely a COVID-related thing, but would add very long-term benefits to the town for years and years to come.
I couldn't agree more. We have been saying since the beginning, and that John, I think you've agreed with us, how do we get more people in the room? And we always looked at it as a physical, how do we get more people in the room? This gets more people in the room. This gets more people access. And just because we're only seeing two, four, five, six people on the computer screen, more people are watching our meetings on YouTube. We take them from here tomorrow morning. This will be uploaded to our YouTube channel, which you can get to from our website. And they can watch the meeting. They can hear what we've said verbatim. They can see our faces. They can see the interaction. And it just, it, it gets people in the room and participating in the process. We would be naive to think that every person who wanted a say in how their town is governed could be physically in a space. We know that's not possible. We can't be at every meeting and we'd like to be. This has given us that opportunity. And it does everything that we have wanted to do, but we're not sure how to get there. We were forced to get there. And now we can backpedal. I love us as a board being in the room, but it also makes it possible. Look, if I weren't feeling very well and I were on the mother, I could participate remotely from home and still have our meetings. If I had to suddenly be out of town for something, I could still potentially participate in a meeting. So it makes the meetings able to continue. That's not always the best thing to do. But depending on what we were talking about, it gives us the ability. So John.
I'm, I'm not a big fan of the hybrid thing. I like the idea of meeting as people there. And if people really want to get here, they usually can get here. The only, and also I was thinking tonight around five thirty. Wonder if we're gonna have a meeting tonight. We still could have had the meeting, but the half the town was out of power. Then half the town would be out of luck or we have to cancel a meeting, et cetera, et cetera. The only thing that I like about the hybrid meetings is now I don't have to pay some kid twenty bucks a meeting to come in with a camera and pull down posted.
I mean, the other piece, John, is that, I mean, I, I don't agree with your statement that if somebody wants to get here, they can get here. As a single mom myself with three kids, like I can't get here every time I want to get here. It's just not possible. So there are many people who I think would want to, I mean, Zoom allows you to interface with Facebook and YouTube. We could create Facebook Live and YouTube Live, live channels that would seamlessly just integrate with this. And I don't know why you're laughing. I mean, it just means that there are more people that can see.
I was heading to say, yeah, I will go along with it on the grounds that we're going to be able to put it up here Zoom. Now you're trying to argue me out of it.
I'm not trying to argue, I'm not trying to argue out of it. I think it's, I think it's something that we need to be doing and.
So I, I think the consensus we're going to reach here is we're going to go with the hybrid. But I, I have different reasons than you, but we're going to end up at the same place.
Okay. I, I could. No surprise, I completely disagree with the fact that people who want to get in the room are in the room. I can tell you, I have been heavily involved in our town and its comings and goings for many, many years. And even the years I sat as a member of the Board of Education and as chair of that board, I could not get to the Board of Selectmen meetings that I would have liked to, to pay attention to more than just the Board of Ed, because I couldn't physically be in the room. But if I could have participated in this way, you know, certainly would have helped while I'm sitting at some, you know, a practice for my child. I couldn't be here, but I certainly could be zooming on a meeting. We have that technology. So I think it's important that we take the technology we have and then we put it out there. We always talk about wanting to be transparent. There's nothing more transparent than bringing ourselves to them. And both Facebook Live and YouTube Live are absolutely things we can integrate into. And that's, I think, is our next step. There are caveats and I think we need to be aware of them. From my own personal, it will not change wanting to hold these meetings in a hybrid manner. But if there were to be a disconnection of internet and enough of a bump in that road, we would have to postpone or pause our meeting. And there is language on how we would do that and how we communicate that. So there are caveats to that and technology does play a role in that. So it's important that the technology we have here go. So I will make a motion that we continue to hold our Board of Selectmen meetings using the hybrid method. Any further discussion? I will mention to you, I had a meeting with myself and Robin as a town clerk. Because this information will be available to board and commission members through her office as well to explain to them that they have to go out on their boards and make these decisions. And that I did encourage them all to really think about the decision they're going to make throughout the summer as we don't necessarily have the technology for everyone to have a hybrid meeting if they're meeting on the same. So you might see fewer of those, at least through the fall, when we can put some things in place. So I don't assume I'll be following those other board and commissions, but I won't be surprised if some of them choose to go remote through the summer for those various reasons. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call for a vote.
Blessington.
Aye.
Burris.
Aye.
Fushinsky.
Aye. All right, so you're stuck with Zoom. All right. Scoop around here a little bit. We have a treasure discussion, so that brings us to ARPA funds. All right, I've rambled these numbers to you multiple times. We have officially received our first installment of American Rescue Plan funds in the amount of eight hundred sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and eleven cents. It is in our bank account. It is there and it cannot be used without following our normal methods and allocation, just like we would with any other federal or state grant. So unlike others, it may be reversible, we've got the dollars. But we still have to go through a particular process. And that means our legislative body has to approve the spending of those funds. So we could do it in our legislative body as Board of Selectmen Town Meeting. So the way we do these things typically, First Selectmen will present something, Board of Selectmen will vote on it, take it to the Board of Finance, they would appropriate the funds. We'd go to town meeting, town meeting will vote. If they voted yes, we move forward with the project. I see that happening, but on two different levels. I think it needs to be more than just me coming up with ideas and presenting to this board. I think this is a lot of money. This is half of one point seven three five million dollars. And we need to make sure we're using it within the means that we have there. Are some rules laid out to utilize this funds and use it in the best way to help with the economic recovery after COVID. So I'm going to suggest two things. I'm going to suggest tonight, one, first allocation of some funds and I'll run through what those will be. And two, I suggest, I don't love a committee. It's hurting more cats sometimes, but we need an ad hoc committee of the Board of Selectmen, specifically meant to handle these ARPA funds, in my opinion. So I, I'm going to suggest that we form an ad hoc committee that consists of some people. But first I'm going to start with proposing an initial expenditure. And this would be a small portion. What I'm going to propose to you is allocating ninety-two thousand dollars of the ARPA funds. That would leave us with, of the first installment, seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven dollars. When we get the second installment, it will still leave us with one point six four five million dollars. So still a lot of money to spend and need to go up with some smart ways to spend it. So what I'm proposing tonight in the ninety-two thousand dollars are the following purchases. Electronic equipment to conduct meetings in the hybrid remote setting. We started using CARES Act funds to purchase the equipment you see in front of you. And I apologize if you're on the screen, you're looking at us through that equipment, so you can't see it. It's a sixty-five inch television with a smart board, with a computer. It's on a rolling cart. It has a temporary microphone you save, so it's not the best sound. It was never meant to be the best sound, but it got through me sitting in front of this camera for months. And then a camera mounted on top. I'd eventually like to mount that camera on the ceiling. The screen will be mobile, so you don't see it in the configuration we do. And we could use it not just for what you see here, but we could actually share documents on the screen. And we, when we got this piece of equipment, I received an initial quote for the rest of the project, which will put speakers in this room. We would use this as our main meeting room instead of downstairs. It's not as pretty, but downstairs, I think you all agree, is not a room. And it's a hallway. It's a hallway. And it also doesn't allow for the larger audience. So more boards and commissions with a larger audience. And if they needed to be separated, could be handled in this room. So I think it's better to move up here. It will put microphones in the ceiling that would be under where the tables are, whether they're just the three of us or in the U shape for larger boards and commissions. So the sound could then be picked up and in the room and picked up on the equipment here. So when I'm broadcasting out, we could be heard. I don't know if there's anyone on there that could unmute and, and answer us, but I don't know how well you can hear us tonight. This is the farthest away we've had this equipment, because again, it's just been myself in the room. So that is about twenty, I've added ten percent for contingencies, because they happen. Things come up and I've added a slight increase for the cost of goods that have gone up since we received initial quotes in December. The cost of just about everything we purchased for the town in the last six months, we've seen a considerable cost increase across the board. So I'm proposing that ninety-two thousand, twenty-three thousand, five hundred for completing this room, make it accessible to hold our meetings. In addition to that, I was hoping that I could have had the demo this tonight or before this presentation, but we're looking at the Owl Meeting Pro. I don't know if you've seen an owl. It's, it looks like an owl, but it sits almost, imagine an Amazon. An Alexa. Yes, yes. Only it's shaped like an owl. It has the face like an owl, has the, has a three sixty camera on top. It would actually broadcast with Zoom. And the camera will turn when Liza speaks. It will turn and catch Liza's face. They'll see more than what they see here. They see us stretched out. That would still be seen, but then as I spoke, camera will be on me. If John speaks, camera will be on John. Troy is in the audience with us. When Troy gives his report, the camera turns to Troy, so you can see the speaker. More towns we're seeing, at least losing people. More towns we're seeing use this. Talan is using this and other town manager highly recommends it. Jim Rupert, our building official in Bolton, is recommending this. So I've set up a demonstration with Owl. That's not happening until Thursday. You, you, it needs to connect to a computer. So we would need a computer and an owl. And I would like to put that in two spaces. Better for smaller spaces. That's why we use this equipment in the big room. It costs a lot more money. The owl is going to cost considerably less money. It attached, we're, but we're going to have to show folks how to use it. It's not going to be, you know, it's plug and play, but it's going to take some time. So I'm proposing two of the Owl systems and I'm asking for five thousand dollars for that, so that we could purchase two of those with its accessories and a laptop computer that could go along with them. And that's in the electronic equipment category. Under the air quality expenditure, I would like twenty-five hundred dollars for five additional air purifiers for the town office building to assist with ventilation within this building. To go along with air quality in this building, the project we have in the basement, which would include cleaning up anything in the basement and pouring the concrete on that dirt floor, which would certainly help with the ventilation and air quality throughout our building. I'm asking for fifty-seven thousand, five hundred for that project. That project was in CIP, but it was in LOSEP dollars. So it was not, it won't affect our budget at all. It would free up LOSEP dollars for future projects that fall into that category. And then thirty-five thousand dollars to replace the air conditioning units at the senior center. And that totals ninety-two thousand dollars. And while in normal time, that would be a lot of funding for us, it's just a glutton incredible amount of, of money that we receive from ARPA. After that, I think it takes a lot more. These are just things that, you know, we know now will add to more people in this building and getting us set up for essentially three rooms to have hybrid meetings. I think in my time, the most I've seen are four meetings in a room. And one of those might, I mean, in a, in the building, in, in any place. And sometimes we've seen, you know, three of our boards and then like the Scholarship Foundation. So they're not a public group, so they wouldn't necessarily need to hold theirs in the same way. However, if they were using one of our facilities and the equipment was available and they wanted to, we certainly could assist them in opening their meeting up that way. But, you know, typically on a night, you could see planning and zoning, maybe the Historical Society and us meeting at the same time. And so some will use the, I'm going to use my air quotes, the conference, Selectmen's Conference Room. Again, not a conference room. It's a hallway. If Heather was trying to work during the day and someone's meeting there, it's not much work she can do with her door open. It's certainly not a conference room. In the green room downstairs, the Owl is portable to some extent. You need, would need a screen and a computer. But if we use laptops, then they could travel within rooms. So we could use the meeting room downstairs and then one of those two separate rooms. So we could essentially have three hybrid meetings happening at the same time for much less cost than this room would allow. So for, for tonight, I'm asking this board to allocate or to agree to a plan of ninety-two thousand dollars for the purchases I mapped out that then would go to the Board of Finance or for an appropriation and then hold a town meeting early in August. We have a couple of other items that we need to be on that town meeting. And then we could purchase these items. Because we have the dollars in hand, we don't have to do reimbursement. It's not, again, to begin to budgeted funds. Questions? Comments?
Like you thought this out pretty well, so.
I, I have. And again, I think I said to you both, and I know I said it, Board of Finance, there's a lot to unpack in the information, the hundred and fifty-one pages of the interim final rule that governs how to use these dollars. Beyond this, you really get to the weeds. You've got to make sure you can answer some of the questions related to COVID. And we have reports to do. There's revenues that we can, we could take some of its revenue and how we can use that. So it's a bigger picture to look at. So I would first, I'm going to make a motion that we expend ninety-two thousand dollars of ARPA funds for the electronic equipment and air quality expenditures.
Second.
Discussion. Okay. So if there's no further discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Blessington.
Aye.
Burris.
Aye.
Fushinsky.
Aye. Carrie. So the next part of that was, again, me suggesting that we form a committee. There are many other things. For instance, our restaurants and anyone who has food service, have they pay a food service permit fee to our health districts, to Eastern Highlands? We could, one of the things we could consider, and this group could bring back to us, is reimbursing them those dollars so that their fee is covered for what they paid this year and pay that for next year or pay that for the next two or three years. It's not a lot of money, but it's a little bit of help to some of these businesses. We can look at ways to help individuals. So I would move that we form an ad hoc committee to expend ARPA, our plan, planning for ARPA funds that consists of the First Selectmen. that consists of the first selectman, a member of the Board of Finance, a member of EDC, and Human Services Director or Representative.
A second.
Discussion, and I'm absolutely open to suggestions, and that, they would solicit, they would look at the interim final rule, look at potential suggestions. We could survey businesses. We could survey individuals. We could survey our community, knowing that the items that come back are going to have to fall into, you know, someone may suggest something that won't work. Their broadband infrastructure projects, their water and sewer projects are those things that we think would most benefit the town. There may be towns, depending on the money they got, that are looking at one project that will extend the entire amount of funding. I would say if we had widespread water and sewer, and we knew we needed to do an upgrade, it was down the road, that would be something we could use that with. One of the other things we could look at is making sure that in 2021, every road and available house in this community has access to broadband. That doesn't happen. We're working on getting information from Charter and Spectrum. It's not been easy to see where the cable starts and stops, so that we could potentially use these funds to make sure cable gets to all of those places. Schools received X amount of dollars. If they extended their funds, but still had some projects that they thought needed to be done that worked in, some of the money could be used on education and schools. So there's a wide variety in a lot of ways to make sure we, we spend it. We, again, I want to make sure it is benefiting the greatest need for our community widespread. You could give money to individuals.
Can we, so here, here's one of my concerns about having an ad hoc committee. There are a couple of things that I can think of that are really time sensitive. And the time it would take to put together a committee, collect their thoughts, and I think would set us, set us back for some things that are maybe a little bit more emergent. The couple of things I'm thinking about are the individual supports through our human services and social services. Those things I don't believe should be brought to us through an ad hoc committee. I think Human Services and Senior Center and like our town departments should come here with ideas so that it can be more quickly pushed through the process rather than an ad hoc committee coming together. The other thing I think, and I think we're going to be in, I think we're already experiencing this, but I think with EDC, and I mentioned this to you the other day, I think it's really important that very quickly we figure out how we can support our local businesses, and whether that's emergency funding for loss of income during the last year and a half. And then also, you know, the idea of, we have a lot of storefronts that are going empty, and if we have support for individuals in town who are wanting to have their small businesses here, I think this is a prime opportunity for us to set something up fairly quickly that allows the EDC or whichever committee to, to process applications for funds, so that the businesses that are here and currently functioning can stay here, and then the empty storefronts that we have can get local businesses in them ASAP. And I feel like those things are more critical and time sensitive than going out to an ad hoc committee, and I think there, there are probably other pieces that we could probably think of that would be the same issue. I think for long-term planning, I mean, we have a few years to spend all of the money. For long-term planning, yeah, I think having an ad hoc committee makes a lot of sense, but for some of the things that I think are much more emergent and could have financial ramifications for the town of Wellington right now, I think we need to just figure what those, figure some of those things out right now and make some of them happen as quickly as possible.
I, I think so. It's a process in order to just expend the money. So you can see now, I'm asking for us on a plan that I've been working on that's going to take us, you know, a month and a half to implement, and the same thing is with Human Services. So that's part of why you see these key people at EDC and Human Services, and it may be, let's say, our Human Services Director coming forward in the first plan said, all right, I've got this plan, and I think we can use it here, here, here. I need fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars to be able to dole out to families in need, and we don't need to know what that is, because we're getting, or who that is, I should say, right? So then we get into a little bit of a sensitive state. But I think it needs to be a thought-out plan, so then every time we want to spend any of these dollars, we have to go to a town meeting, and that is weeks of planning. And I think these, the reason I suggested an ad hoc committee, which you don't oftentimes hear me say, I think we need another committee of folks, is, is these people are key to those items, and that's the first thing we're going to talk about for those emergent things. And then you're going to see us have a few more town meetings, and just because we have one in August doesn't mean we're going to have one in the middle of September, and to be able to expend those funds, because some of the use of those funds could be cash payments to individuals as long as they fit into the criteria. And so this brings those people to the table immediately to have that conversation and come right back to us. And I think with some of the makeup of this committee, those don't have to wait for nightly meetings to happen. They could happen during, during the daytime as well, so during a business day. But, you know, I think it's still got to go through the process of coming to my office, formulate a plan, bringing it to you, and I feel confident that we could still work in a a quicker fashion with this small group, which is why you don't hear me suggesting, unless there was a considerable push from you all, to have five or six members from, you know, the community at large, part of this community. These are key players in the financial aspects of where we've seen issues during COVID. And key players to that, and bring them to the table, and at our next meeting, we might have right away a plan for us that falls into that, but it gives us some direction for, because again, I think we're going to see, even as I looked at the items I brought you tonight, it seemed like a lot, and when I finished adding it up, it was ninety-two thousand dollars. We still have one point six four five million to do and use it smart, again, to make sure we help with the economic recovery to our residents and our small businesses, and I think that's key. Liza, I'm with you. I think our, the Human Services side of it and our individuals, you know, residents who are suffering because of COVID and the EDC side are probably the first things we need to lay out on the table and how we can do that. And I still think we can do that in a pretty quick manner, because unfortunately, we still have to jump through hoops in order to allocate the funds, and we could do all these things to get to, we need to keep in mind, we could get through here, we can get through Board of Finance and Town Meeting, the townspeople could say no. And so it's important to me that we have all of the checkboxes checked to make sure that everything we think out follows the rules of the funds. We are at the self-policing portion of expending this money, but what has been made clear multiple times, after, look, we're talking about federal government and billions of dollars, trillions of dollars that have gone out into the country, it's going to be a while before they get to our report and say, yeah, that wasn't a suitable expense, and we're going to take that money back. So we want to make sure we never get to that point. And there are some critical questions that have to be asked there, but I still, I think it's important that it be more than just there be a bigger voice.
Lyspen, I'm not arguing not to have the committee, but I'm saying I think there are a couple of things that
Need to be at the top of the agenda.
There's immediacy, right? Like, businesses who are struggling right now can't necessarily wait an additional six weeks beyond the six weeks they're already going to wait to get to our August meetings. Do you know what I mean? Like, or whatever, or whatever date it is, but like, because our process is slow. We know that. So I think there are a few things we need to identify, like now, and figure out how do we, how do we make sure that we're getting them on the agenda as soon as possible that
You know, the first things we talk about. These things you're talking about need to be the first things this group talks about.
And they're a prep rate, so I think.
Priority. They're our, I hear them say you're, they're your priority.
Yes.
So they need to be the priority for this group, so that we can take it to the townspeople to be able to get help out there as soon as possible.
Without the typical lag that a committee can bring to the process, because we know that we have an expert in Human Services that we have hired to run our Human Services. That's the person that I believe should be coming to us and saying, this is how much money we need in order to support our Wellington residents. It's a little bit more complicated, because EDC is a committee, and I think they're down a member or two since.
I think they're doing really good right now. I think, I think they've been pretty active right now.
Okay, so, I mean, but still, it's a little bit different, because we don't necessarily have like a professional staff member whose job it is to monitor the ongoings of, of our businesses, but, but again, I think expediency is the key word here, so if you're saying that there's a committee that can start meeting tomorrow, then I'm cool with that, as long as they're, we're understanding that their process is rapid, and that there are certain things that we need to prioritize right now that can't get bogged down in red tape. That needs to get pushed through quickly, and then everything else that's like infrastructure support, that can be talked about in a better second wave, but we've got to talk about how to get rescue funds to the town in a way that's going to benefit the town as much as possible.
Who seconded my motion?
I did.
Well, Liza, do you want to, I'm going to make a friendly amendment to my motion, if you want to have your say before and do that or after?
Sure.
Before. Go ahead. I'm going to write it down.
We have to have some kind of of way to allocate this money other than just saying, how much do you need? Because, oh boy, I need it all.
John, but that's a process already. It has to go to us. It has to go to the Board of Finance. The town has to vote on it. Like, that's already our process.
I understand that. But I'm also saying that the committee is a way to do this. Now, yes, the committee hopefully could meet tomorrow. It needs to get on it and not be one of these, well, we, I can make a pact in September, you know, we don't want that. But we need someone to make these decisions. I like a committee, the only, the only thing I would say on it is I think it needs the addition of somebody for planning and zoning, because we don't want the businesses to get tangled up in, okay, we need the money. Well, planning and zoning says you've got to change your sign before we'll let you do it, you know? We don't want to get into that stuff. So that would be my only change on it, would, to add TMZ.
Okay.
And get the, and then we need to get this, this thing going.
Fast, right. So I will amend my motion to say, I move to form an ad hoc committee to assist with expending ARPA funds, so they would assist. They're not the only caveat. And John, I think we can address the EDC, PZC in potentially a staff member that works in one of the same. So we have, we, you know, we contract Mike Demato for land use as our zoning agent. EDC in his other role, in his role, they contract him separately to work with EDC. So Mike really works well with both of those commissions, and I think could be a great voice to us within those two commissions. The only, right, so if you're, that, that makes it, I think, a lot easier for us to begin meeting potentially relatively sooner, because we're talking about staff member availability there, and I think he may be able to fill that role for EDC and planning and zoning. Certainly I have a task too, but I think that would be beneficial. And I will assure you both that the top of the list for me is making sure that we are able to assist our residents who have suffered through this and our business community. And I think we haven't begun to see the ramifications on individuals, because the eviction moratorium is still out there. And so as all of those things fall off and the moratorium on, you know, your ever-source bill and being able to be late in those may have just really compiled for some of these folks. And our Human Services Department has her finger on the pulse of those items, whether or not we need to. We have incredibly generous residents who have supported the food pantry till it was busting at the seams. We, we are very generous, but we may need some assistance once we see some of those things come to fruition. We may need to see housing assistance. So that, to me, Liza, I hear you a lot, it clearly needs to be the top of our priority list, so we work on that number one, and then see where we need to go from there. All right, to the motion, my friendly amendment was to form an ad hoc committee to assist with extending ARPA funds.
Wasn't going to list the people with.
At first, selectmen, did you agree with a member of the Board of Finance?
Yeah.
Okay, it just, it puts it a little bit more on their radar and hopefully can streamline the process. By the time we get there, they're informed and can help, you know, express the necessity and to their board. A member of EDC, I will add, planning and zoning. That potentially could be one individual, and Human Services representative, the EDC planning and zoning representative. Okay. Liza, did you accept my friendly?
I do.
All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call for a roll call vote.
Blessington?
Aye.
Buritz?
Aye.
Woszynski?
Aye. And I thank you both. It's, it's a daunting task. Look, how many times we say we need more money? I wish we could just take some of these funds and do some of the projects we can. We heard Troy say we could spend upwards of five hundred thousand dollars taking trees down. I'd be really hard pressed to put that into the reasons, the eligible uses for COVID money, and it's frustrating. But what it may do is free up some other things down the road, so that we can put more funds into those things.
True.
So.
The Emerald Ash Waters, do they get COVID? I wish they did.
We, we may need to ask for some testing on them.
I mean.
I mean, anything's.
Has anybody asked them?
No, has anyone tested them?
No, I don't think so.
Let me get my mask. Can I get the COVID test? All right, at that, we have one member, or two members, and there's still a member of the Board, present to speak. Speak now, whoever holds the peace, anyone in the room or online, those three of you who have hung in there with us.
Members.
Um, I, I can't tell you. You can unmute yourselves and speak. I laugh, because if you could see us sitting in front of a giant computer screen talking to said computer screen, I feel like I'm talking to a robot. A little bit, right? So is there anyone present to speak? You should be able to unmute your microphone. Okay, seeing none, you are always able to contact the Selectmen's Office. Good and welfare. All right, I got a couple of things. Again, if you're looking for up-to-date COVID information, it's not moving at the rapid pace it was, but ct, portal.ct.gov backslash coronavirus will give you all of the information I've shared. Mobile Food Share will be here at the Town Office Building next Wednesday, oh, not tomorrow, um, July seventh, from eleven AM to eleven-thirty PM. Please support your local businesses and restaurants as much as you can. Our Wednesdays in the Park Concert Series is back. It begins tomorrow, six-thirty to eight-thirty. It is a rain or shine event, severe weather like we have tonight, wood camp. So we hope it doesn't cancel. Bruce John is our first performer. There will be a food truck out there, and I want to get the name wrong. I believe it's Max Woodfire Barbecue will be joining us tomorrow night, and it's every Wednesday after that through August eighth. So my hats off to our new Parks and Rec Director, Bethany, who started, who's picked that up and got it back up and running. And it begins tomorrow. Summer camp begins on Monday. Paul's Pond is currently open. If you don't have a pass, you can reach out to Parks and Rec Department for that. I don't know how many of you have come down seventy-four, noticed the lights at Old Farm Road in Jared Sparks. For a bit, the timing seemed off. We were waiting an awfully long time. The traffic was backing up on seventy-four. So I reached out to DOT to see if they had adjusted the time, if the timers weren't working. They are passing it through the DOT department to see who it belongs to. In the meantime, since I reached out to them and they are passing it from person to person to person, the timing of it seems to be back to normal. So if you ever notice those things and you're not sure, you think there might be concern, I encourage folks to reach out to the Selectmen's Office. We hit those lights every day, and it took a, a And it, it took a, a couple days before I thought, is it just me, or are they a little bit off, so they are, and we will see. I think that's all I have, no, I, I did have, I had one other item in the very near future. Now Captain Palmer at Troop C will be leaving Troop C, he was promoted from lieutenant to captain. So he will no longer be command of the troop, he will move on to a bigger duty. Somewhere at St. Lee's Headquarters, so I really want to take the opportunity to thank him. For all he has done in our area and specifically in Wellington, he certainly was with us. Through a pretty difficult time, not just COVID, but the incidents that happened here last May. And so I thank him for his leadership at Troop C, and look forward to meeting the new. The new head of Troop C. Any good and long fire from you all? No, I do want to take that to this, this is our last meeting with Heather. Done in the short time that she's been with us, it's been. Alright, I will not ask for a roll call vote, but I will move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? I, unanimous votes, well, thank you, if you don't want. That's Jared Spock.